Uh, we open the bid now online.
Do you hear?
Um, can we do those before ten or do we have to wait until ten o'clock?
You can do those before ten.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, hey.
I'm glad we can do them before ten.
Yes. Morning, Matt. So are you?
Morning.
Message, Director, this is Nikki.
Yep.
I have another question. We're moving the meeting to Thursday.
Yep.
Um, so are we keeping these bids on Tuesdays? Is it okay?
No, we'll probably adjust them going forward. I'm sure there'll be a couple that may need to just get open on Tuesday. But going forward, we would make a bid of date match.
Okay.
But remember, that doesn't start till February.
Right, and then you're gonna also approve the cash requirements after the checks are paid?
No, that's always been on the Tuesday.
They go down on Wednesday.
Yeah. Well, maybe we're just approving like we normally would do pending review.
Okay, but the checks are gonna be paid already. I'm just.
Yep, we need to talk that.
Okay, thanks.
Morning, everyone. Ask you please rise, open in prayer and pledge allegiance.
Dearly Father, instruct and teach us in the ways she wants to proceed. May we walk with you daily. I pray we will always seek your direction and guidance first. Last, let us not make decisions based only on our limited knowledge, but let us act based on your infinite wisdom. Lord, there are many things we do not understand due to our limited knowledge, and you are the creator of all. We will world full of chaos, hatred, anger, disease, and famine, and this is not your plan for us. May we unite during this time behind efforts to foster racial, cultural, and community harmony. Lord, when we pray, we ask you to listen and hear us. How can we ask that of you when we cannot listen and hear each other? We pray to be the example of the love and gentleness between a parent and their child. May we share that example with our fellow neighbor. Now, we pray for healing for those that continue to suffer from this virus. Rid this enemy and have it evaporate without any further destruction. These things we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the body of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible,天地一體， with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. At this time, we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting and ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Yes, sir.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Other comment on ten items only at this time?
Okay, uh, two point one bid openings. Nikki?
Yes, um, we had a bid for bridge bundling number two, three, and four. Um, we had six bidders. Larson Design Group, CDR Magwire Incorporated, Tectonic Engineering Consultants, McTish Kunkel and Associates, Bassett Engineering, and Navarro and Wright Consulting. Um, there's no bid, uh, there's no price on the bid response summary, so I assume that there's quite a bit of information within the bidding documents that will need to be, uh, reviewed.
This is my enough credit. There's multiple line items that we have to review.
Um, and our second bid was the no-till drill. Uh, we had two bidders for that. Uh, W.F. Williver and Son, that price was thirty-six thousand. And Triple H Equipment was thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Your boss on.
Okay, moving on to accounts payable, cash requirement report, Randy?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present the cash requirements report for invoices due through January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, to be paid on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of two million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Of that approximately half, or fifty-two percent, is County General, which includes, um, five thousand, or five hundred thousand, two hundred, five hundred twenty-three thousand, sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents of regular invoices, and six hundred forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-three cents of debt service. Twenty-eight percent is grants and other sources, or six hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Uh, seventeen percent approximately is RMS, or three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. And two percent is escrow, um, forty-six thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and forty-seven cents.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, just, um, over the past several months, we've had a lot of inmates housed elsewhere, which is, like this month, it's over thirty thousand. And, uh, you just gotta keep an eye on. I know that the courts are doing everything in their power to try to, you know, balance that. Uh, and I can assure you that if, uh, if there's people in our prison, uh, and it's overcrowded, that they deserve to be there. They, they would be putting them on ankle bracelets or monitoring, uh, as much as they can, as long as it's not a risk, uh, to our society or our communities. We'll keep working on trying to reduce those numbers.
Certainly, uh, COVID quarantine protocol, please.
Daniel, comments, questions? Hearing none. No motion except to count as payable.
I'll move to approve.
I'll say.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Permission, uh, uh, four point one, Billy, please.
Morning, Billy.
Wanting questions? I'm here, uh, to, you know, solicit, solicitation for the Act thirteen mini-grants funds for park recreation in the county.
Okay, any questions or comments from District Police?
So this is Act thirteen legacy fund, right, that we're using? Do you happen to know Billy off the top of your head? You may not know. What's left in the Act thirteen legacy fund?
I am not looking to public.
I wonder if Randy thought.
I, I think, boy, I ask that, but not a hundred and thirty-six now or something.
Well, we're making a hundred and fifty thousand available. I think there's more than that, but.
We had, we previously.
Three hundred and some, yeah, but we.
Yeah, we pledged.
Twenty-five to.
Pledge went down to your claim. Very, uh, the way we had worked on this, um, was it was Act thirteen funds that we, we, if I remember correctly, give these, that's the, um, and I had changed some verbiage so that we could actually use, or have it for you to, to utilize.
Both Act thirteen and Act thirteen legacy. Yeah, and I know you're new to the county, so I don't want to put you on the spot. That's okay. No problem. We have the funds. We wouldn't put it out there for a hundred and fifty thousand if we didn't have it. I think what you're telling us is that, to the extent we don't get as much as we think we're gonna get from the state for the legacy, we're gonna tap into the regular Act thirteen.
Yeah, I think there was a, we meet the threshold.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is open to all nonprofits, municipalities, and so forth.
Yes, but, okay, great.
Thank you.
No motion except.
I'll move to approve.
I'll say.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Moving on to, uh, TDA actions. Being under TDA actions, excuse me, uh, under adult probation, we are requesting to change clerk for pay grade five to administrative specialist, pay grade five, six.
Okay, any other motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. This time we'll recess the Commissioners' Public Meeting for the salary board and convene the salary boards at this time.
Commissioners, seeking your approval on the following salary schedule. Uh, change in adult probation office, change clerk for pay grade five to administrative specialist, pay grade five, six.
No motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All fair say aye?
So, one comment. So, so what's worth noting here is the reason this is being increased is because the person is doing different duties. They're no longer doing the duties of a clerk before. They're doing the duties of an administrative specialist. And that's at a, at a different pay grade. I just wanna point that out to the public.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. At this time, we'll adjourn the salary board and reconvene the Commissioners' Public Meeting at this time.
And moving on to personnel actions. Commissioners, do you want me to just go through each one of them?
Yes, please.
Separately, or?
That's correct, group.
Okay, requesting your approval on the following personnel actions. In RMS, while Stults Truck Driver Full-Time Replacement, pay grade six, eighteen dollars an hour, effective twenty-four January, two thousand twenty-two. In the courts, Robin L. Ranina, uh, Executive Secretary, part-time, new position, pay grade five, fourteen sixty-four an hour, not to exceed one thousand hours annually, effective nineteen January, two thousand twenty-two. In the District Attorney's Office, Joseph W. Hope, as Assistant County Detective, part-time, new position, pay grade, uh, which is a part-time new position, at twenty-three dollars and sixty-six cents an hour, effective twenty-four January, two thousand twenty-two. In pre-release, Jesse James Wagner, as Resident Supervisor Two, full-time replacement, pay grade eight, twenty-one seventy-eight an hour, effective twenty February, two thousand twenty-two. In the pre-release center, Ricky Sue Burke Kaiser, as Resident Supervisor, reclassification, pay grade five, fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents an hour, effective twenty-three January, two thousand twenty-two. In voter services, Nikisha J. Kramer, as Clerk Three, full-time replacement, promotion, pay grade four, fifteen fifty-four an hour, effective six February, two thousand twenty-two. In Management Information Services, Rhonda L. Vodel, Record Retention Coordinator, reclassification, pay grade six, twenty-three fifty-three an hour, effective twenty-three January, two thousand twenty-two.
Any other motion except the personnel actions?
I'll move to approve.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Moving on to action items. Maya, you have a, quite a few. Do you just wanna go through them all?
Sure. Um, the first item I have for you is to, um, vote to approve the electronic signature policy thirteen oh eight. This is a new policy, um, that will be made for the county, which will allow the county to accept electronic signatures, um, from our vendors, as well as any other, um, transaction that's needed.
Okay, any other motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Um, the next item I have for you is vote to approve the redevelopment business capital program funding for DeSalvo Restaurant Edition and Innovation Project. Um, that's in a amount of one million dollars. I do believe, um, there should be some representation there. If you talk a little bit about the project.
Believe Mr. Salvo and, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald are here. You'd like to come up and speak, please? Would you like to come up?
Can we go here or?
Yep, this is the live stream for Iphos.
Oh, okay.
We'll engage the camera.
Yeah, maybe on camera there, Jason. Good morning. Right up there's the live stream.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, Jason Fitzgerald, Le Pen Strategies. I'm here with Prince DeSalvo. Um, so what we're asking the county to do is serve as the pass-through entity for redevelopment assistance capital program grant, um, which is, was submitted by DeSalvos, um, with, thank you to you guys, uh, with you as the applicant and we're the sub-applicant. Um, so essentially, um, the responsibility of, of the county, um, will be to, um, you know, serve as the applicant. What we'll do, uh, you won't have any administrative expenses. Uh, Mr. DeSalvo is picking up, uh, our expenses, um, to administer the grant. So it'll be a twenty-two tab grant application that's due, um, in about five months, I think, right, Phil? Um, so what we'll do is, um, fill that out. That will include, um, the appropriate resolutions, uh, from you guys that I think one of them you're voting on today, uh, and then we'll also enter into a sub-recipient agreement, um, which will protect the county in the case that, uh, although there's very limited legal exposure, because this is a reimbursement program, these guys have to expend the funds upfront, um, submit the reimbursements to the Commonwealth after they're determined to be eligible. And they're actually signed off by every, uh, state rail officer, including the Attorney General. Um, then the, the checks will go to you guys. We'll work out transferring them through to us. Uh, but the next thing that we work on is a cooperation agreement between DeSalvos, um, and the county, which would protect the county, um, you know, in the case that there were any kind of, you know, audit issues or anything down the road. Uh, but again, since it's a reimbursement program, uh, it would, it would be, my friends who are attorneys say you can never say that there's zero exposure, but there's virtually zero exposure, uh, to the county on this. And we'll work with you. Uh, every time that we communicate with the state, um, we're required by law to copy someone from the county on that correspondence. Um, you'll be invited to have a representative on any call that you'd like to, or you may decide that you're, you're on some and not on others, uh, but you guys will be kept informed. Uh, you have to be, uh, by law. With that, I'll turn it over to the fun, uh, part. If you'd like to just give a brief overview of the project to, to whatever degree you'd like to, Mr. Salvo.
Uh, currently, we're, uh, in the midst of doing a redevelopment, uh, trying to become cohesive with the balance of the development that's been going on in the Basin Street Corridor, um, and Fourth Street. Uh, our goal is to grow that area along with, um, the other factors that are, that are in play currently. We're very excited about it. Um, it's been a long time coming, and, uh, we're hoping that we can become a, uh, a bigger asset to the community, um, at that location. So the goal is to create a, more of a mixed-use facility, uh, bringing in some other, uh, businesses into that area as well, to try and foster more of a, uh, a neighborhood-type feel, which is what I think the overall goal is with all the projects that are actually in play currently. And we'd like to thank the county for their participation and consideration in this matter. We'd like to thank the state and Governor Wolf for participating in this with us as well, and, uh, hopefully this will, uh, bring us forward into, uh, a better part of, uh, bringing Williamsport on this stuff further.
If I could just note, note just a couple of things I think that are important. This is a match grant, so this is not a million dollars that's given to DeSalvos with no expectations. They have to match dollar for dollar. So, th- they're gonna have to invest a million, they'll get a million. Everything has to be put out for public bid, um, three bids. Um, all work done on site will be prevailing wage, labor, and U.S. Steel. So, uh, and this is a very complicated process. Um, it takes a lot of upfront investment by the developer. Um, you know, there are some of these that we're working on that, that are waiting on their, to, to get their money two or three years. So, um, it's a very good, good program, and again, I want to thank Senator Yaw and Governor Wolf for their support and Commissioners, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm gonna add to that. You know, going back maybe eight years ago, when, I think you were involved in that with the, the old city, the gateway, and, and the vision of not just, uh, the mayor at the time was Campano, and, uh, the business community, right? Uh, and, and now, eight years later, you look at what's happened to that area. So you gotta give thanks to the, the visionaries, uh, the government officials that believe in it, and then, and then the business owners that are willing to risk millions. College is a, a big player. You know, the donors to that college, you put up that center, and now the music, uh, center has changed that area, and that is the gateway, uh, to our community. And when, when you, uh, travel on that Beltway heading west, well, it's south, I guess, uh, it's just incredible what it looks like, and it's gonna continue to grow. And Vince, I wanna thank you for, that's a considerable investment, you know, and, uh, I know you could do other things with that money, but you wanna keep improving that area, and thanks, thanks for that.
We appreciate that. And, you know, we, we've made a presence there. Um, it's been almost thirty years now. And, uh, when we first got there, we were it. There wasn't anybody. There wasn't any development. There wasn't anything going on. Uh, so our goal all along has been to try and create a destination. And, uh, now that everything is happening around it, uh, our goal is to try and enhance that destination and make it even more of a draw. So our goal was to bring more people into the area. With that, uh, currently, we have people that travel, you know, hour and more to come down and visit, especially, uh, over the summer. So, if we can enhance that, and it's, all it's gonna do is bring more people, more dollars into the city, and that's gonna roll all the, you know, all along. So, we can thank, uh, my mom and dad, who had the ultimate vision of buying that piece of property that was, uh, the old Huff Supply, um, and, uh, Union Hall Facility that sat vacant for ten years before they bought it, and, uh, put a considerable amount in. So what we're adding is just a touch of what they've already spent, and what we've already spent, myself and my sister, moving forward. Um, so we've been there collectively, me and my sister, for over twenty-five years. Um, the project's been there for thirty, so. Five years in, and we jumped on and have been running head steam forward since then, and we're not planning on stopping at any terms. And, uh, so, thanks for the opportunity.
And you're right, Vince. You're, you're the cornerstone of that area down there. There was nothing down there but your restaurant at the time, and, and you had the vision, and your family did, uh, to put a lot of your own skin in the game here and apply for this grant. Um, it's a redevelopment grant, um, that, um, it's a pass-through for us, and, uh, it's gonna grow the area down there. There's a new developer coming in down there, has plans with the college. Uh, new buildings come up, and, uh, in the next couple of years, you'll want me to recognize that part of the community. It'll be beautiful. Be a great place to walk. Take your family down there for all kinds of activities.
Well, we've, we've invested all of our own private money, um, in the restaurant, in the wine bar, uh, the acquisition of the other mill estate. So we've been slowly saving and buying a little bit of the time over the past thirty years. So now we have an opportunity, you know, you can go further with it, and we're pretty excited about it. I think it's been pretty awesome.
And thank you, Randy, with you and your family for believing in, and staying in Williamsport, um, because you could've left a long time ago.
Yeah, we're not going anywhere.
Yeah, we appreciate that, and, uh, we thank, we thank you and your family.
Thank you. Yeah, they came here in, uh, grandfather in, uh, nineteen oh three from Italy with, uh, a shoemaker's bag in his hand. And my mom came here in nineteen fifty-six from Florence with, uh, a suitcase. And, uh, somehow, everybody's kinda made it work, so. We're, uh, we're happy that they gave us an opportunity by taking that big chance and coming here, so.
You had, had business around the street?
Yeah, there's opportunity, you know, there's opportunity if you're willing to work for it, so.
You know, um, I, I wanna thank you also. I wanna thank, you know, regardless, to the public, it's important to understand, these are not county tax dollars. The state votes bonds. The bonds are what fund the RACP program throughout the state. And, um, you know, regardless of what one thinks about Governor Wolf's policy on the pandemic, he and Senator Yaw have been incredibly good working together to bring money back to this county, uh, in the last six years. And, uh, I really wanna thank the governor, because, uh, this is state money that is now a two-million-dollar investment, year million, plus a million from the state, and it does spur all that other, like, gubtails with all the other development down there, some of which has also received, uh, various state funding, you know, and, um, but, but really, as my colleague said, I mean, ultimately, it's on your back, right? I mean, if you had taken on the responsibility to invest a million, the state wouldn't even be looking at it. So we do wanna thank you for doing that.
For sure.
You know, I hear the story, you're talking about your parents as immigrants, and I'm thinking about the experience we had when we went up to, uh, Jersey Shore last week with the immigrants, and how some of those immigrants one day may be opening a, a Colombian restaurant or a Haitian restaurant or whatever kind of restaurant. Because I know when your father, grandfather came over in late eighteen hundreds, like, he faced a lot of discrimination. He faced people saying, "Who is this guy?", especially because, like, my grandparents, they were dark-skinned. They were from southern Italy. I think yours was from southern Italy, right? And, and they, they were looked askance at, at them. So, um, it's a, it's a great lesson for us in so many ways, you know, but, um, and then I, I also just wanna note that, um, Penn Strategies, we thank you for being part of this too.
I was gonna say, if any of those folks wanna start a business, they can reach out to Penn Strategies. Phil speaks a little bit of Spanish.
Okay, we can, but, but the.
The one that's not in the same area as DeSalvos.
That two million dollars is gonna be creating jobs for people in our community at prevailing wage, which is, which are good wages. They're gonna be buying supplies from our local suppliers, Pennsylvania Steel, or U.S. Steel, I should say, not.
U.S. Steel, yeah.
Yeah, so in any event, it's a good, it's a good turn of events all around.
Commissioner, I just wanna add, uh, what you said about the RACP grants. We're fourteen for fourteen.
Yeah.
So that, that shows that, um, our legislators are getting done in Harrisburg, and, you know, Jason, your, your, your business helping, you know, this helps it also. So we wanna thank you for your, your leadership and guidance to.
You know, and we'd be remiss if we didn't thank the voters in Pennsylvania and the taxpayers who have supported the RACP program year for year by the elected representatives they send to Harrisburg who vote to approve the appropriations that go into the RACP program. And that's very important for people to understand that we'll be investing in the state.
We're very grateful for Senator Yaw, who championed, championed, championed this for us, with us, believing in us for years now. You know, he's watched the business crowd. He's been in and out of the restaurant. These folks have all been in and out, you know, and support us and have continued to support us, and local community supports us, and, and we're grateful for all of that. I mean, without all of that, we wouldn't be here today. So it's been, it's been a really good opportunity, and it's, it's been a lot of work, but it's been worth it, so. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Okay, no motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll say.
All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Uh, the next item I have for you is vote to approve the White Deer Golf Course, um, land conversion appraisal. This is, um, any amount of nine thousand dollars. Um, what this appraisal will do will determine the market value for the conversion of lands to support a potential swap between White Deer Golf Course and Pennsylvania College of Technology.
So I think we may want to put this off to another week, because we had some conversations with some local constituents who had some, uh, additional concerns and ideas about this. So if my colleagues are amenable, I'd move to table this.
For a week?
For, yeah, to get, or a week or, as soon as we can get those folks into talk.
They'll be in.
Talk to Thursday.
Yeah, great. So I don't even know if we have to move to table it. I think we can just edit aside, solicitor, right?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
All right, with that, then I'll just put this back on, then potentially bring in commissioners to go on it then.
Yeah, well, let me add that. When you're doing a project like this, this has been about a year in the making. And so, Shannon, it's DCNR and federal, it's National Park.
National Park.
Right, and it's a complicated and drawn-out, you know, process. Just so that the public knows that we've been trying to sell some of the land at White Deer Golf Course so it can get developed and bring in, you know, taxation, which can hopefully, you know, save us from more taxes. But it is a long, drawn-out process. And we had been talking with an entity, Penn College, just because it was close, to swap it out. Not swap, I take that back.
Convert.
Convert the land, which, you know, they were very, very good as far as giving us the approval and looking at the idea and the plan and saying, yeah, we'll consider this. So if we're going to be meeting with a couple of private investors that have land on Route eighty-seven, and would that be a better choice for a facility or whatever it may be? But it has to be in recreation, right? So we're going to meet with them. The issue is comparing values. The county has got to get the best bang for the buck and incomparables. So that's why Commissioner Mayor Vito wanted to table this, so we talked to them, and I would think we'll move forward as soon as this meeting is over.
Give a little history, yes. When we looked at some portion of the land around the golf course, part of the property, we learned that the federal government had provided a twenty thousand dollar loan to, or grant to the golf course at the time. And it tied it to the whole four hundred fifty acres. And if you go back and research it, in September of nineteen seventy-eight, when it was done, they tied it to structures, they didn't say what the structures were. So they tied twenty thousand dollars to the entire property. We learned of this, we learned of this information, we couldn't move forward, and we contacted, we've been working on this for over a year. And the college graciously, we were able to do the conversion. And we just want to make sure that we're doing all our homework. We have an opportunity maybe of eighty-seven where this may be a little bit better fit, or it could be a fit for maybe something else recreational, doesn't necessarily have to be for this. But we wanted to hear those individuals of eighty-seven before we made a final decision on this. The goal is to move forward and do the conversion at some point, and try to do it in the immediate future, because we need housing in this county. And this would be an opportunity where housing could come in and address the needs of the constituents, especially with that area over there. With development, with Digger, and potential other developers going in that area over there, it could help that area immensely, and overall the county. So it's just best to put it off a little bit, just to hear from all sides. Don't put the cart before the horse before we make our final decision. And we can do that within the next couple of weeks after we talk to the individuals that have interest of eighty-seven. This happened in the city already. Shannon brought to our attention, she used to live down there. They put a ten million dollar building up, and then found out later they had to do a conversion. And they were out looking for property to purchase and kind of had egg on their face, but we don't want to have that happen in our county. So we're making sure we can get all the homework done, all the Ts crossed, and all the Is dotted before we do the conversion and move forward.
You know, and we want to thank the constituents who contacted us, because they were paying enough attention to what's going on in the county with the county commissioners that they saw.
It was a retired DCNR worker.
Yeah, who saw this and then contacted us and said, listen, there's another possibility, and we put.
I thought you were talking about the original.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Because it wasn't in the deed initially.
They're not in the deeds.
This most recent effort to, you know, contact us, and so we'll see, we'll see what happens. The results will be in with them, and then we'll move forward either way someday.
Absolutely. And I apologize to all the staff, but a lot of work.
Yeah, and I apologize, Maya, to you.
That's what we, that's what we do, and your elected officials and constituents called, and, you know.
You try to be responsive.
That's right.
Right? I mean, that's what we're paid to do. So, and Maya, I apologize, because I think that the email or text that went around that initiated with me, I did not send to you, and I apologize. It was not intentional, I was sort of in a rush to get it out to people, so you were the person putting the agenda together, and it should have gone to you.
No worries.
Okay, I didn't want you to think it was an intentional oversight.
Okay. Eight point five, Maya.
Yes.
Eight point four, I'm sorry.
Oh, eight point four, yeah. This item is vote to approve the revision to the travel and business-related expense policy, specific changes. And this policy is to revise the IRS rate from a ninety percent reimbursable rate to the full standard IRS reimbursable rate, which is currently fifty-eight point five cents per mile.
The rationale for this is that the IRS does an extensive study of costs for reimbursing employees or others who utilize their vehicles in the conduct of business. And the feeling was that the, using the IRS rate is probably the most fair way to be fair to us as county employers and to the employees who utilize their vehicles.
And the same thing.
And I think, you know, some of the drive of that, too, was also due to the fact of gasoline prices and inflation prices, just everything's kind of going up as well.
Yeah, we always seem to have, even when prices are high on gas, we seem to have higher prices up here in this little valley for some reason.
Yeah, I would not be voting for this. At one time, we were at eighty percent of the rate when it was down below two dollars. But now with the used cars, new cars, and gas, I mean, it's very expensive to drive a vehicle now or loan it, and they're getting reimbursed eighty percent, so.
And Commissioner, there is also a second part to the revision as well to this policy. It's also to reflect that there will be a federal per diem meal rate established, which is also done by IRS and the PSA based on high-cost areas. So what that means is that any time there is travel by a county employee to an area outside of Williamsport, you would go to the federal rate and determine what the cost, the average cost for lunches, and that would be the reimbursable rate for which the employee can connect for.
And again, this is a third-party entity calculating the right change to the Government Services Administration by the General Service of the Commissioner.
Motion.
I'll move to approve.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item I have for you is vote to approve the equipment lease agreement with John Dear. This is for the purchase of two mowers, needed for White Deer Golf Course on a lease term to the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. I believe Chris Stran should be there to talk a little bit more from the finance side, but essentially, there should be no cost to account for this.
Chris, you have any comments, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourselves and then. Morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Chris Stran with Indigo, on behalf of White Deer Golf Course. Looking for approval for the lease of two greensmoors from John Dear, Finch Services. This was in our approved operating budget, so this is just kind of moving forward with what we all talked about.
So this will come out of the golf course revenue that we collect?
Correct.
I'll move to approve.
On fair side?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Eight point six is vote to approve the agreement executed by the Director of Registration for the month of December, and there were ten contracts.
Okay. Questions on these contracts?
These are all under ten thousand. We've got uniform, leased for the MBJ Office, deadbolt agreement, leased, sign language, support services, scheduled maintenance, cleaning service, preventive maintenance, fire suppression, and essential home use.
The majority of those commissioners are renewed with the exception of two.
Motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Chris, I see we have a meeting at two o'clock on, I think it's Thursday. And what is the meaning, is it an annual report that you're giving or is it a monthly report?
Yeah, our monthly report that will give the kind of final financials from 2021 will be the main topic.
So if you have them on your computer, I'm just trying to save the trip and the expense coming up back up, you know, and you want to go over it after this meeting, then you don't have to come back on Thursday.
That's fine, if you'd like me to.
Is that? Yeah, good, okay.
Okay, Maya.
Okay, yes, the next item is vote to approve amendment to agreement with Donald Holzbaker. This is, there's two amendments to this. The first one is that we're extending the termination date for the agreement from October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And we'll also have a change order cost of seventeen thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars to extend some of the area that he was currently working on to make the overall project better. When they started to do the work, they realized that more work needs to be done in a certain area to allow for the flow of the water to be better. So hopefully, we don't have to do this project again.
This is that Muncie Stream Bank, right?
That is correct. And the rickshaw job that they're doing there.
And this is a grant from?
It's actually a usual stream bank.
Oh, it's Muncie Creek Stream Bank, look on the left page. Maybe it's in, it's the Muncie Creek Stream Bank, but it's in U.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a project that's all.
Right. Okay, all right, I'll move to approve.
I'll say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
The next item I have is vote to approve the First Amendment to Agreement with Department of Community and Economic Development. This is to extend the current project for the Lawrenceville Sewer Project from February first, fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And there's no increase in cost for the project from these needs.
Motion. It's for discussion. On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Commissioners, I believe that's all I have.
Major. Okay. Thank you, Maya.
Thank you.
Eight point nine, Kelsey Green, vote to approve change order for floodplain housing remediation program, Fair Grant funded.
Good morning, Commissioners. So can I have the change order for the Fair Floodplain Housing Remediation Program? And then eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. While doing the utility, the contractor found some rafters that needed to be replaced, and this cost will be covered by the Fair Grant.
Okay. Motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
On fair side?
Aye.
Okay, eight point ten, Beth, are you on line?
Thank you, Kelsey. I am.
Vote to approve agreement with Keystone Communications. This is a twenty twenty-two budgeted item.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a contract with Keystone Communications for professional services for radio maintenance on the current radio system in the amount of six thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars per month, with a maximum of a year for eighty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-two. It is a twenty twenty-two budgeted item. Basically covers the current radio system from console to the towers, to the output on the tower. We do have it broken down monthly, so that when the new radio system is completed and signed off on, then this contract will drop away, and the warranty on the new radio system will pick up.
Okay. Time motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? And then on fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry, thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Eight point eleven, Mark Davidson, vote to approve the Agland Preservation Certification of County Funds for the twenty twenty-two program year. This is a twenty twenty-two budgeted item.
Morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a routine action. We come, request approval for this, these funds each year. Harrisburg Bureau of Farmland Preservation requires that each county certify the funds that they're providing for the program, and they in turn plug that into their formula for state allocation of funds as well. Typically, we look at about four to five to one, so we should expect, I hope, two to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of state funding in addition to our fifty thousand, which, by the way, is a budgeted item for twenty twenty-two.
So we put up the fifty thousand track preservation, and the state matches it with in the range of two hundred to two fifty?
Hopefully. Generally, that's been what's occurred.
Right, legislature's approved it, but.
Well, it's plugged into their formula, which is pretty complicated, I believe. They use hard figures to plug that in, and we get our numbers after the allocation is done in February. So we'll know in the end of February what our allocation for the year is.
So maybe you can just give a quick, one-minute example of some of the ways these ag preservation funds are used, so the public understands.
Well, typically, well, not typically, the program targets preservation of farmland in the county, so a farmer will apply for the program if he wishes to keep his farm in agriculture or basically keep development from occurring on that parcel. And they apply for the program and work through our scoring process. There's an appraisal piece, an offer is made, and we purchase an easement, a conservation easement on that property, which prevents future development. They can only build one additional residence on the parcel once the easement's in place. It doesn't restrict ownership, or they can sell it to anybody they like for any price they like. It's essentially the easement stays in place on the farm in perpetuity.
Is there any way to lift the easement?
No, not the rule.
So it's not like Clean and Green where someone can go back in and pay the taxes, the exact tax?
You know, it's supposedly in perpetuity. We've been in thirty years now, so, you know, who knows what will happen down the road, but that's the intent of the law.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion.
I'll move to approve.
I say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Jason, you on the line?
Yes, sir. All right, eight point twelve, vote to approve amendment to agreement with Professional Petroleum. This is a twenty twenty-two budgeted item.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the first item, eight twelve, this is just a simple amendment to the PSA that we have with Professional Petroleum. Professional Petroleum will endure repairs or any changes we need to our fuel islands, our piping tanks, all that. So we just, they've given us an increase on their cost maintenance repair. Great thing, so we have to act on it and get it done.
Okay, any questions?
No, Mr. Yorks, I know these come out of the revenue from the landfill. I look at the P A D E P Facility Operation Inspection, nine hundred dollars an hour. That must be a very extensive inspection.
Um, which one is that, Sharon?
That's page three of three. It's the additional services. You don't, these are just the prices. I don't think that, you see the P A D E P Facility Operations Inspection?
Yeah, they, they don't give you much choice.
No, I know that. I know that. But, um, that must be very expensive.
How often does that have to happen, Jason?
Through that, I'm not sure. The repairs don't stop as matters need to be. I don't know, and I don't know the inspection frequency.
Could you find it, Allison? Send it to us, please.
I will.
Thank you. Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve.
Say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So period.
And eight point thirteen, eight point one-three, with the change order number two with Arnold Development. This goes with the well drilling and pumps and well installations we do in infills twenty-three-one, addition up to twenty-two. The good thing with this change orders is actually a reduction of twenty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars.
Wow. We don't often hear reductions from contractors.
We'll take it.
We thank them.
When's the last time you ever heard of a change order costing less?
Right.
I guess I will. It's all had to do with piping and things that we changed and stuff like, there's things they did, we decided not to move forward with it like this. And it's done on the drainage ditch, a lot of the ditch that we were putting in decided to be a full bear version of the original.
Well, that's good.
All right, that motion.
I'll move to approve.
Say.
On fair side?
Aye.
Period.
Okay, moving on to Commissioner Con.
Okay, effective February the third, our Commissioner meetings will be moved to Thursdays from Tuesday. This is to allow staff more time to prepare contracts and get work completed. Right now, they only have basically Friday and sometimes Monday to do the weekend. It's hard for them to hold the weekends, so. We used to have a work session on Tuesday. Commissioners' meetings used to be on Thursday, and so now we should have half the sessions now on Thursday in the week before. We start at ten a.m. And we want to shoot that media release also on that so that everybody's aware of that. Effective February the third, look, meetings will be held on Thursdays. Also, I'd like to address, we have a terrible shortage right now with employees. We have about thirty positions open, critical positions at prison and our budget and finance office. There's many areas in the county that need help. Our employees, our, many of them are doing two jobs and working excessive hours. It's, some of them are developing burnout. There's a lot of stress, and us as the Commissioners are leaning on this, we're addressing it. We're trying to fix it the best we can, and it's a national problem with employees right now. As you drive around, you see businesses have limited hours, they're closing earlier, opening up later. But we have facilities that are twenty-four-seven operations, a lot of them. It can't be reduced in hours. We need good staff. We're asking if anyone out there looking for employment, please pass it on because we need to staff our buildings and our offices. Many of them are critical, and we're continuing to address this, but it's a great concern right now for me because I see the tolls taken on our employees that are doing the job. And we don't need any worm to leave. They do great work. You know, our biggest asset in the county is our workers, our county workers. They work for the people. When I worked next door, I didn't work for the Commissioners, I didn't work for the judges, I worked for the people. They were my bosses, but I worked for the people. And I came to work every day knowing that, knowing that I worked for the people out there that were paying my salary, and I took that serious. And at the same time, these people that are employed by the county, they do take their job seriously. They put a lot of time and effort. We often praise them for different things they do. We recognize in Commissioners' meetings, we want to thank them for their service, especially through these tough times. The guards are working excessive hours, excessive shifts, and we have to continue to attack this and address this because it's not going to get any better. So we'll continue to work on it daily, but it is a major concern within the county right now, is to get the departments up to adequate staff so they can operate.
You know, in that regard, it's interesting. I was looking into this whole issue of the workforce decline. Before the pandemic, there were more women than men in the workforce. And since the pandemic began, a million women have left the workforce. And oftentimes, it's because they've been balancing trying to take care of kids who may not be able to go to school or kids who are sick. And we are back actually as a nation where we were in the late eighteen, nineteen eighties, nineteen eighties in terms of the number of women, not the eighteen, no, but in all seriousness, it's the late nineteen eighties, which is a good thirty-five years ago in terms of how many women are in the workforce. And so I think that, you know, one of the things we may want to think about as Commissioners is how can we, what can we do to enhance the ability of women to come to work for the county? And maybe, maybe it's time for us to think about whether, you know, getting a management company and trying to put together some childcare facility. It also goes to the whole question of what we've talked about with the early learning and the funds from A R T, that so many, I was thinking about this, so many of these women are single parents also. I mean, we know half the families in the country are single parents, so we've got, we've got single parents, some of them having to leave the workforce to take care of kids and stuff. So it's a challenge to us.
I'm in the middle of a meeting. Thank you.
It's a challenge to us. But I hear what you're saying, and we may want to look to some creative ideas to try to get women back into the county workforce. You know, the whole point of the advancement of the child tax credits was to try to help, those were tax credits that people would be getting when they filed their taxes. It was to try to both get money into the economy, to stimulate, but it was also to try to help these families where women are trying to raise kids alone. And so, you know, the flip side of that is we hope that the men out there will take responsibility for their kids, right? Takes to the tangle. So anyway, yeah, but it's a good point, Commissioner, that you made.
Okay, public comment this time.
Three minutes.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jamie Flick. I'm the president of the Southland Sport Community Park Association. So I just want to update you on the ACT thirteen grants you gave us five years ago, and I think I can squeeze this in in about three minutes. So, five years ago, our nonprofit group raised about a quarter of a million dollars on our own to build five tennis courts in Southside. The final cost of the construction ended up being two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand due to prevailing wages, so we came to the Commissioners at the time and asked for thirty-seven grand in ACT thirteen funds, which we were fortunate enough to get. So at that time, I think Commissioner McCurnan said, come back in five years, let us know how it went. Actually, I didn't even tell you. So I'm just going to give you a quick update of numbers of what we've done with the tennis courts over the last five years. So last week, we completed our annual report for the USTA, United States Tennis Association. We had two-hundred-and-seventy-nine kids from all throughout Lycoming County in the tennis camps this past summer. That brings our five-year total to over one thousand kids that have benefited all throughout the county in playing tennis. The cost for the camps is five dollars. So he's, you know, he's breaking the bank coming to these week-long camps. Of course, those numbers don't include adults. That's just the kids coming from the summer camps. So the courts are right next to the new playground equipment, so now when families come there, T-ball practice, and you take the other kids, you're playing tennis, or you're going to the playground. So we also partnered recently with the school district, so we charged them a small fee for their teams to use the tennis courts. That way they don't have to go to the indoor facility in Southland Sports. We've cut the taxes in half for the local taxpayers not paying, you know, twenty grand to go up to those instead of paying us a few grand. So we keep that for seven years, stack it up, then we resurface the courts every seven years. That keeps them in mint condition. Obviously, exercise, right? We're facing this childhood obesity crisis in the schools and all throughout the nation. So more and more kids showing up for the tennis camps. For what it's worth, last year we had forty boys and girls just in the Southside. That's more than we have in the football field show up to play tennis. We did win districts in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, so more and more kids. You build it, they will come. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we had Olivia Dorner, who you might be familiar with, win states both years, so number one player ranked in Pennsylvania, number twenty-eight in the country. So she just accepted a scholarship to the University of Denver. So I'm really here just to thank you for that grant, to give you the five-year update, and like to encourage you, I don't know where we are with the ACT thirteen, if your funds are dwindling, but just to encourage you to keep funding recreation because the kids and the adults need it. I mean, we're right next to the senior citizen, the senior center that step built, so we even have some seniors coming down to the tennis courts. Right, Tony?
Yes.
So I really just wanted to thank you and encourage you to keep those grants coming for recreation.
And the, is it Hannah Somerson? Hannah Somerson, she's from Southside.
Yep, she's coaching.
And she was a great tennis player at Lycoming.
Yeah.
She, you know, so, as you said, the kids see us, they want to come. You can't find anything to do for five bucks.
No.
That's, that's one of the best kept secrets of Lycoming.
And that's just the camps. I mean, tennis, if you have, and we give tennis, we give rackets out. If you don't have a racket, we give you a racket. So, you know, aside from the camps, it's a free sport. You've got, once you've got your tennis balls and a racket, it's great exercise. You can do it, a lifetime sport. It's not like maybe wrestling. I mean, Tony wrestled, I wrestled, but I'm not going to call Tony tomorrow and say, hey, let's come on over.
Come up here, he and I wrestled.
Get your singlet on, come on over. But we can go play tennis, so.
You wouldn't be in my weight carry.
So again, I just wanted to thank you very much and ask where we are with the ACT thirteen funds this year or their new programs. We did just get, because of our success, the USTA just gave us ten thousand dollars to continue the program and grow the program and hopefully do lessons for free, get rid of the five bucks. So where are we with the ACT thirteen?
Well, you know, we have about, I think, sixteen million dollars in ACT thirteen funds.
Oh, no, but that's not for, that's not for.
Well, that's not the legacy funds.
Legacy.
The legacy funds. And I'm not sure whether you got legacy. I mean, the ACT thirteen funds can be used for legacy purposes. Legacy funds cannot be used for anything other than recreation. But, so we have, what you just heard earlier in the meeting is that we've opened up a application of a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for grant application for, and I think the grants are twenty-five thousand dollars maximum each. So there are entities that want to pursue recreation. That's what we approved early in the meeting. But, Mr. Flick, our thanks goes to you and to the other folks in that organization to raise a quarter of a million dollars, basically just through the efforts that you put out is amazing, amazing. And it is a, now it's a infrastructure improvement in that. I saw that ad in the paper for five dollars for the tennis camp, and I thought it was fantastic. My son went down and participated, and I know, I think that the tennis club up there got a grant from the Tennis Association.
It's per USTA.
Yeah, USTA, yeah, to help put on it. And it was just fantastic. It was a place for kids to go during the summer, and I really thank you for that. It's nothing short of amazing in my mind to do that. That's a lot of money, and I know that, you know, you can tell us some of the other folks involved in the fundraising. The doctor.
Dr. Branton.
Dr. Branton from your PMC was very active, I remember.
I mean, I don't go through the names. The fact is, the whole county, it's not just us, but, I mean, I'm looking at these guys do the same thing in their communities for, Scott, for decades. And Tony, it's not just, you know, it's where you live, it's where your kids and your grandkids are, and it's just not the dollars. You could drive by and see you down there with a paintbrush. It's the same with all of you guys out here. So it's, I just want to thank you. I mean, we do, times are tough, but we really do live in a good community.
You have to understand, I mean, it takes people like you and some others that really put the tribes together, and you work very hard and you're very diligent in what you're doing. But you have to come out and thank the community because they're the ones that support it. They're the ones that buy those, you know, chicken dinners and, you know, or donate large sums of money to get the projects completed. And you're right, Jamie, recreation is very important, especially in today's generation. We need our kids more active. We need to be more active. So thanks for your.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing us to our attention.
Yep.
Great. Thanks. Any other public comment this time? Okay, agreed on. We have completed our agenda, and we'll be back here on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth at ten a.m. Thank you, everybody.
We'll meet you upstairs.
Sure, we'll meet you upstairs.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Do you need us to print something out, Chris, or?
No. I'll just run through. It's really just a year-end update.
Yeah, I figured I'd save you.
Great.
Save us some expense this.
I appreciate that.